Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Public comments? Of course, thank you. Public comments. The second agenda item, I'm at practice. I was gonna say we're at practice, but I won't. So the second agenda item is public comments, so I would open the floor. If anyone present here would like to offer anything for public comments, or barring that, any of our online participants.
I have something on the public comments. I am not a good IT person. I struggled with the simplest of things and I called in here when I was trying to get my new account. And they were extremely efficient, very polite, and quick. So I just want to pass on the credit.
Well, thanks, sir. Anyone else for public comments? Great. Moving on to agenda item number three, the consent agenda. We have minutes from our June meeting. We have the retirements of our Stellward Maintenance Center, Jerry Prue. A few resignations and a full slew of nominations. So are there any, first of all, we'll start with the minutes. Any proposed amendments or corrections to the minutes from June? Very good. So any questions regarding either resignations or nominations? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda published.
Sorry.
Tammy and Susan, great. Any discussion on approving the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by raising your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I'm abstaining because I was not prepared. All right, the motion passes. Thanks so much. Agenda item number four, finance. Is Director Gordon here?
She is electronically.
Great. That's not like that stuff, right? So there's, so Director Gordon, the floor is yours.
I think the first item on your agenda was the Treasury Report, which I don't believe has been posted yet, so I don't know if you want to table that one.
You can't hear us.
You can't hear us either.
Oh. I can hear you.
You can't hear us. We can't hear you. We're reading your letters.
I can hear you, Renee.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you, Scott. Okay, I'll be right there.
I think she said she's coming.
I think she's coming.
It looks like she's walking. You're getting a tour of me.
You hear us now, Scott? Good. Here goes Director.
I've been able to hear you all along.
So I could, I could hear Scott.
It turned out the volume was turned down in this room.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I was on my big screen in my office, but.
So the information regarding the elevator design, what's provided in the packet, there's a motion in the packet, but I'm wondering, and I'm actually jumping to C and D. Is there any additional information you would like us to have? Or you think it would be helpful for us to have in C and D?
Just for that, well, see, I tried to put everything into that.
But that might be a good time to have a Director of Finance and Operations come down and be introduced. I can see, she's in her office too. But this, as we move forward on facility projects, Holly will be.
She says, wait a minute.
She's saying, she could never. She hasn't been formally introduced to the SVSU yet, but you know, we did introduce her. As we roll out, she's coming down.
Yeah. And so did B, was that the picnic table was accepted?
We haven't taken action on that yet.
Because I see that on this here, so I didn't know if she had spoken to that one. I was looking down the hallway.
The C and D, C and D will involve Holly and Renee at right now, but eventually it will be all chipped into Holly as we, as we onboard her. So if you want to.
Superintendent Colkeen, would you like to make an introduction, please?
I would. So the individual who just walked into the conference room is the new Southwest Monstrosity Advisory Union Director of Facilities and Operations, Holly Anderson. Welcome. And why don't you, you have practiced, you know, a quick little introduction and bio of who you are and how you got here.
Hi, my name is Holly Anderson. I spent more than 20 years on construction sites running capital construction projects from schools, high schools, elementary schools, colleges, electric vacation homes in the Mount Stone Valley and everything in between. I most recently left, I have been at Bennington College running all their constructions for the last 13 years and to work on a number of different sustainability, energy efficiency initiatives.
And we're very happy to have you join us, but probably no one is happier than Renee.
Well, I'm no fun to work with, just zero fun.
That's good, because we don't tolerate fun here.
I'm happy to answer any questions. And obviously, if you guys want to reach out, have any questions, concerns, comments, good jokes, I'm around.
So the broad topic of finance, so do you want to have any questions for Director Anderson right now? Okay, great. Well, incident, you're a good B at Holly, but. So the Treasury Report was to be posted. Who we have to be is the RK Miles picnic table donation for Molly Stark. And I don't know if Principal Basic or if Director Gordon or Ann Shear wants to speak to that. Yep. But the floor will be open if anyone has any comments about the donation before we take action.
Donna, I don't know if you want to speak to it since it's your school.
Sure, sure, sure. No problem. So yes, we were really happy to be able to get a picnic table. We were trying to get some picnic tables around the school during COVID and due to the lack of availability with some of those tables, we were unable to order them and have been on the search for some. And luckily, RK Miles of the Manchester branch donated one to Molly Stark, so it's looking lovely under a tree in the front of our yard. So thank you for this, RK Miles, and I hope that the board accepts this nice fundraiser, donation, rather.
So I would accept a motion to accept RK Miles' donation. So we'll call it Dick first, Jill second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Scott, would you be willing to draft as the clerk? Would you be willing to draft that? Thank you.
Please advise Jeff.
Scott, I'm gonna ask Jeff to my right. Thank you.
I was about to delegate.
So that brings us to the elevator design and the information about the pre-qualifications. As I said, the information was included in the agenda packets. But is there any additional information either Director Gordon or Director Anderson should consider?
The only thing on the pre-qualifications is it's a requirement for one of the rules of the State Board of Ed. If we have any construction projects that are going to be in excess of $500,000, a board has to set pre-qualification criteria for the bidders that will be invited to submit a bid for that project. So working with Holly and our project manager, Centerline Architects, they assembled the document that we had in the board packet specifically for what we're going to be looking at in terms of the HVAC optimization projects and of course, the Benel elevator as well.
So the agenda specifies that we need to take action on the pre-qualification as well as the design contract. So first things first, I would entertain a motion for the SVU ESD Board of Directors to award design contracts to Goldstone Architecture and authorize the board chair to sign the contract, which has been reviewed by legal counsel. This is with regard to the elevator. I would entertain a motion with that. Jill and Dick, any discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
We just got one data.
It ended up being one, although we tried as hard as we could and we went back to several saying, please, please, please. So we have one.
Any other questions? Okay, great. So there's motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. So that motion carries. So Directors Anderson and Gordon, there was a proposed, a proposed motion for the elevator. Do you have proposed language that you would like us to consider for approving the pre-qualifications for Goldstone?
I think it would be to accept the criteria as established by the Centerline Architects document that was included in the board packet.
I would entertain a motion with that effect, please. Take your time. Motion number four, any questions about the pre-qualification criteria support by Centerline? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving these pre-qualification criteria, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Before we move off to finance, anything else for us to consider?
Since everybody's here, I'm happy to print the warrants for everybody to sign except Scott. I mean, I can scan it to you if you'd like, but I can do that. So I don't have the printer for the new printers yet. I'll put it in DocuSign. Okay, so I will do that.
All right, so that brings us to agenda item five, the Superintendent's Report. So Superintendent Colkeen.
Before I turn this over to our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment and our Assistant Superintendent, we do have the new principal from Powell Elementary School here this evening. So she's sitting in the corner, Bethany Lord. So Bethany, the drill's gonna be the same as, and you know, I'm not shy, can you? So introduce yourself to the Southwest One Union Elementary School District Board. Bethany, the new principal of Powell Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be in this community. I have had a wonderful support staff to help me along the way. I've had a lot of questions and a lot of people are willing to give me answers. So I have loved getting to know the community. The teachers are fantastic, so hardworking and watching the kids come in. It's the first elementary school that I've been a principal of. I was a principal of the six through eight previously, coming from San Antonio, much larger school. And watching children walk in that building with the excitement that they have every day is priceless and I have enjoyed every moment of it. So thank you for the opportunity. I will be here for meeting. I would love to meet you. We have our open house tomorrow night. Feel free to come on by if you would like. We'll have hot dogs around 6 o'clock if you're hungry. Hot dogs, chips, cookies, the whole nine yards of eating and out and enjoying one another. So thank you for letting me be here. Thank you for welcoming me to Vermont and I am just very grateful.
Bethany, you are recently from San Antonio, but you do have a closer connection.
I grew up in North Adams, yes. I'm from Hurry. It's actually been very interesting now because a lot of parents are my age with their kids at Powell that I never even knew we had connections. But we grew up in North Adams together, relatives. You know, I joked in my interview like Powell was the town that you drove through when you're going to the airport or somewhere, you know, maybe Bennington. And it's amazing that once I have started to meet the community, how many connections actually go back to North Adams, my youth, people that are friends with my family, just, it's actually has far-reaching, you know, connections beyond Powell. And it is, Powell pride is, is very real. And they, the school is the center of that community and I am so grateful. I loved growing up in North Adams. I loved my small town and I loved the connections that we built and I see that in Powell. And everybody that walks through those doors is wanting to get involved, wanting to be a part of that and I have been very grateful for how they welcomed me there. So happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Colkeen, I should have suggested this when Director Anderson introduced herself, but maybe all the board members could identify ourselves in towns that we represent. Great, agree with this. So I'll start. So I'm Chris Murphy, living here in Bennington and I serve as Chair. So thanks.
I'm Jeff Lee, I live in Chatsbury, I serve as clerk.
Big France from Woodford.
Jill's for Bennington.
Amy Soul, Powell.
Susan Howell, Woodford.
And Sandy Foster, Powell.
And Scott McInerney from Chatsbury, Vice Chair.
Thanks, thank you. So I'm gonna yield and I have some other items that I'll get back to after we wrap up. But we yield to Assistant Superintendent Morgan Drew and Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Sump.
For having us and actually, we're gonna, there's gonna be a theme to this. I'd like to introduce a new member of our curriculum staff. As you remember, Pat Conway, our math coach, retired this question. So I'd like to introduce Joanna Staines, who is the new district math coach for the SVSU. You started and do I want to say a little bit?
I'm very excited for this new role and this opportunity at the SVU. I have been here in Bennington for seven years. My parents have been here for over 30 years. I have fond memories bringing my children to Bennington when they were growing up and I love this community and I love the opportunities I've had in this district to get more and more. I love working with Hollins and Laura.
Yes, thank you so much. And can you let me share? I'd also like to introduce, because we're here to do this presentation tonight with all of the principals from the SVU ESD. So Donna Colley, standing on the screen, and Elizabeth Grunberg. So Donna Colley from Monument, Elizabeth Grunberg from Benel, Jeff Johnson from Chatsbury representing Woodford, Donna Basic representing Molly Stark, and Bethany Lord representing Powell. And we are here to do this as a team. Johnson is here. She supports our elementary schools as well, through student support services. So thanks for having us. And so we have, we're caught between like technology and hard copies. Here we go. We're two one.
We are now co-hosts.
Okay, so we are here tonight to report on. So as you'll remember from last year, we started to report out to you basically recovery, which is our responsibility. We have a required SVU recovery plan that covers three pillars, social, emotional, and mental health, which we presented to you last fall. And we will come back from and present to you again and give you an update. We also presented on engagement, student engagement, and we say mark trueness, they say trueness and easy attendance. So that's pillar two. And we did a presentation last year on that as well. And pillar three is about academic achievement. And this board did a great job of advocating and asking us great questions about whether it would be possible to start looking at data again. So the state of Vermont, and Melissa will go into this in just a moment, did release data. And so we are able to build a presentation for you with some great boundaries because we want to remind you and the state wants to remind you that we're still in recovery. And as a reminder, the message last year was it will take many years to come through recovery. And so as a team, we put this presentation together to get back on track because it is also an expectation that we're sharing data and this will help you. The one good thing about the tidiness of this is it's right before budget season. So it allows you to think a little bit about investments. I also hope that you pay attention to when we talk to you about where we're using our grant money. So for example, John's great example, that's Title II money that we have access to. So that's an example of a grant we can use to support the work as a district. So if you're a little bit of that. So my job is to just introduce the team and to remind you in the presentation of some acronyms. So ESAR, as a reminder, is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency relief. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, which all school, all of our schools have a foundation and that is also a state requirement. And then we are also required to have continuous improvement plans that drive our work. And so our continuous improvement plans run from 2020. They will expire actually the end of this year, 2023, and we will be required to report out and start the process again of using data for the next cycle. You can find information about the SVU recovery on our website, right on the homepage. There's a link. As a reminder, you're always welcome to give feedback. We also have, how often is that feedback button checked? I mean, check the white people, please. So we check, please. The feedback, we check the feedback button. We do bring that information back to our team. So we encourage in every meeting, we share that that feedback button is there on the slide. Also on our website, under the curriculum tab, this housed our curriculum and our proficiency-based graduation requirements, which are important things to reference tonight. And so at this time, I'm gonna, we're gonna ask each principal to share their continuous improvement plan goals that are linked to academic achievement. And we are going to start with Principal Grunberg.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Grunberg. I'm the principal at Bennington Elementary School. As you can see on the goals listed in front of you are continuous improvement plan goal one for ELA is to have 50% of our third grade students proficient in their foundational skills by this, this upcoming spring for Sback 23. And our goal three is that by the end of this year, at least 35% of our Bennington Elementary School third grade students will be proficient in math standards as demonstrated in our Sback scores. And we're making great progress and have a wonderful team.
Principal Basic.
Hi, yes, Donna Basic, principal at Molly Stark Elementary School. And our academic continuous improvement plan 202023, goal number one, our academic proficiency goal for ELA has been identified by the spring 2023, 65% of Molly Stark Elementary learners will meet or exceed their growth norms as identified by the FASBRIDGE and NWEA map. Our goal number three, academic proficiency goal math in spring of 2023, 65% of Molly Stark Elementary learners will meet or exceed their growth norms as identified by FASBRIDGE and NWEA map. And we are monitoring those data points through our staff meetings and having good conversations on how to make the progress when needed.
And Principal Colley.
Good evening. It's great to see everyone, some present and some via Zoom. So both of our goals are mirror one another. We're looking at both ELA and math for our students to achieve 75% of them in grades three through five proficient as measured by Sback. But a common thread that you'll note at Monument is we also provide that data. We want to gather that data in regards to a year's worth of progress. So we're looking for 100% of our students to meet a projected growth rate of 2 to 5%, which equates to one year in reading and math as measured by NWEA, which is our, also an assessment that we use locally.
Thank you. For Powell Elementary, we're continuing the work that was established even before I came along for our first goal for ELA, using evidence-based models. Students one to three years below proficiency in reading and writing will demonstrate growth as seen through data from math testing, FASBRIDGE, and Sback. By June 2023, students in grades three through six will meet projected growth rates of 2 to 5% each year in reading as measured by math testing. Goal number three for math, by June 2023, students in grades three through six will meet projected growth rates of 2 to 5% each year in math as measured also by math testing. Yeah. And Jeff Johnson.
So I'm gonna sound redundant here, the board, but hello, everyone. As you can see, our goal is very similar to some of the other buildings in the district. We're looking at 80% growth, projected growth rates in our ELA measures for math testing. And we also look at a similar 75% of those students in three through six will meet projected growth rates in maps by the beginning to the end of the year. And we really want our team, when we developed this plan, really wanted to focus on kids making growth, not really proficiency as much as the growth. And we see the growth of proficiency will come. And we've added some pieces the last couple of years that we, we think are gonna really help us reach this, this goal. And you want to continue, Laura, for Woodford?
Yep, yes.
So also the principal at Woodford. And once again, meeting proficiency goal in ELA by 2023, 70% of our students will achieve normed growth in maps by the fall. And again, in the academics area of mathematics, by 2023, 70% of the students will achieve normed growth rates. And again, working closely with the team at, the small team at Woodford, but a great team at Woodford, they're doing a lot of great things there to help meet those goals as well.
Thank you. So we're gonna continue. We're gonna ask you, and I can see I'll be writing, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through our whole presentation and we're gonna give you time for questions. So if you're making notes. So the next thing we want to do is all of, each school has individual goals. They filter from the district continuous improvement plan goals. That is actually a state requirement. And I don't know if you picked up on this, but we set these goals in 2020. We set these goals just as the pandemic was starting. But we've made a commitment to keep our goals and we also know that there's a chance that our goals are just gonna continue on. And so we're feeling good about doing a data analysis later this spring. And we've been, the state's been great about supporting supervisory unions and acknowledging this period of time and knowing that we might have, we might be able to take our plan and actually just continue it on to, again, respect this period of time. So I'm gonna turn this over. It's a cynical. I'm gonna click on this link, correct? So just stay on that first page just for a moment of the. We can click on that first. The overview. Okay. Just the very first slide would be great. Thank you. Before I jump into it, I want to bring you back to say we had statewide results from the spring of 2019. We did not have any results for spring of 2020. So these results that I'll be giving you is right in the middle of the pandemic. It's from the spring of 2021. These were released by the state last May. And we will be, we are on the lookout for the annual snapshot to have the results from last spring. They of course take a few months to make sure that they've, because a human being has to go in for some of the things, like the writing, to make sure that that's scored correctly. So it always takes a little bit of time and we could get the results. So we'll be able to look at those spring results soon. We'll also, prior to that though, your individual student's spring results should be coming to you soon for anybody that had a child that took them last spring. So the results that you'll be seeing again are from spring of 2021 because that's what's on the annual snapshot and was released in May of just last year. So what is the annual snapshot? It's part of this holistic approach to assessing performance focused on continuous improvement. And it's all tied to the Vermont A-QL standards. What are the components? There are five different components of the multiple measures that the state of Vermont wants us all to look at in a holistic approach. They want to make sure that we're looking at academic proficiency, which is what I'm gonna be talking about tonight. But they also want us to look at personalization, safe and healthy schools, investment priorities, and high-quality staffing. The next, it's a little bit deeper. You are super interested in, so how do they measure those things? Here's how we measure those specific different categories. So again, sticking with the theme of the night of academic proficiency, how do we measure the English Language Arts? It's through right now, through that Sback score, also mathematics. And there's also a science test. Even though it's listed physical education as a test, I don't have results for you because due to COVID, we did not do the physical education test during this window of time. We hope it's coming back, but we will watch and see. English Language Proficiency, I also will report out on that. Graduation rate and our career in college readiness. So that's for academic. So how do we did for the year of 2021, again during the time that we were in the middle of the pandemic? For English Language Arts, I gave you the, how we did for meeting, not meeting, or progressing for Vermont and for the entire SVSU. For English Language Arts, for mathematics, for science. I can tell you about progress for English proficiency because there's enough of those kiddos of newcomers to America where the head size is big enough for me to tell you what it is. And previously, I would have had to say, I'm really sorry, the number's too small. I can't report out to you because privacy and FERPA. But we have a wonderful influx of newcomers. But we have a wonderful influx of newcomers. So I say this only because budget season will be coming up soon. And, and so I can report to you how they're doing. And then we have a graduation rate. And I also made a note about the physical education assessment canceled during that testing because of COVID. The next slide is all about our safe and healthy schools and how the SBSU is doing. And personalization. Those two question marks under there are the questions that are given up to us directly from the state. How well do our schools provide environments where school, where students feel healthy, safe, and supported in achieving their goals? The SBSU is exceeding performance. And because we know that although we don't have a growth or a state score, we wanted to provide this to you. And for benchmarking at K1 and 2, we use a test called FastBridge. This is from fall of last year until spring. And so how did our students grow? Those percentages would be the typical or aggressive growth, both for mathematics and for reading. So it is not just flat growth, which we wouldn't want. And it's not moderate growth, which would be great, especially during that time. It would be a typical growth or aggressive growth. So we're heartened by the fact that our students are growing even last year. And with maps testing, again, you remember from the goals that the principal shared, many of them said that they wanted a map growth rate of 2% to 5%. Even during COVID, most of those that you see on your chart are about 2. So there are similarities that we want to make sure we focus on. But most of those fall within the range of the goal that we set pre-pandemic. And this was in the middle of the pandemic. This is why our kids are interested, which is pretty amazing. I also wanted to give you specifically from the state, why are we not including the longitudinal report and what they say about it? Because we have to consider the basic challenges for interpreting those in terms of trends when using the state assessments and comparing it something pre-pandemic, they don't understand. And the last piece is all again about this new tool that we're having us use called the snapshot. What is it not designed to do? They don't want us using it to rank schools or compare them to each other. They want to make sure that this information is never used to shame or link schools and that it's used as one tool in order to holistically look at how the school is going to make progress to fully represent the school system. So we use the data and if I you in your packet, you're now on the back of the front page. We use data to then make decisions about, about instruction. And so we have curriculum teams that have worked. We are a district that fosters, we bring teachers together to do good work. And so we have Curriculum G and Strands on your head and smiling. She sits with about 20 practitioners that we bring together to be part of the process to do this good work, to look at what are heading those practices. Our district literacy coach, Karen Wasseling-Hall, meets the literacy team, again, a group of about 20 that comes together to look at what's best practice. And so what you have listed there are the curriculum, the, we have the links to the curriculum documents again, which can be found on the website. And then we have the tools that we're using for instruction. So you can see for English, just examples, I'm not going to go through the whole list and any of the principals are welcome to jump in. But our, we're focused on the science of reading at the elementary level. There's a focus on using integrity that starts in early ed. So we have a great partnership with early ed and they are using universal strategies through, well, that's HANNEN. And then integrity is also being used at our primary level to support that development. We use foundations with, now we have decodable readers. So we have readers that now align with the lessons that the teachers are teaching. It aligns perfectly with foundations. It's amazing. That's all funded through Esser. We will be able to use Esser money to support this resource for all classrooms. We use Reading Street, and that's locally funded. So that's our curriculum, locally funded curriculum budget. And then column's writing. We have a trainer that we bring in, who's one of our contracted service providers. And again, that's a locally funded case. Our focus at math is on conceptual math thinking. And so we have Vermont, it's great. They have an all-winners network that is supported throughout the state. John leads a team and that's, I'd say, two years. Yes. So it's a newer strategy and we're just starting to infuse that. And that's, we support that work through Esser. And then the ongoing assessment project, OGAAP, we offer opportunities every year. So this year it was. Yes, added to reasoning. And so we offered that during the summer and a group of teachers came together. John, you're also now an OGAAP trainer.
I am.
Yes, we're very proud of that. So we are also something we foster in our district because we are a large district as we're building our own trainers. That's, we're hoping to be very ethically responsible because if we use money to train trainers, to now come train, we don't have to bring a trainer in. John can provide that training for us. And the whole thing is we're also lifting up teachers to become trainers. So John has a partner that's a classroom teacher that has partnered with her to provide training for teachers. So just another way we're trying to build infrastructure for support. For science, you'll notice that we're focused on the engineering practices, which are really fun, like Legos and robotics, all sorts of fun things like that. The Boston Museum of Science has been an incredible resource for us. They have an evidence-based branch called Engineering is Elementary. And so our teachers have access to those resources. And then through the lens of global citizenship or social studies, we focus on the inquiry design model. And you'll see a mirror image of that as you move through grades four and five. And then again, we listed how we monitor. Again, the central referred to the fact that we, we try to, all of our principals who are here have their staff look at data. These are all skills we're developing. So we want teachers to be able to come together to collaborate, to look at data together, to make decisions together, to problem solve together. And so the tools that we give them are FastBridge, NWA MAP, and then the state assessment is also available. But that data only comes once a year. It's a one little team piece. And then the last piece we wanted to share with you in the back is that if this all comes along with, we know that we have to be able to provide professional learning. And so you'll see as a team, what we've listed as the professional learning that's being offered and the sources that we're using to fund these opportunities. So for science of reading, conceptual math, engineering practices, we also have a focus on inclusionary practices. We offer a rotating book club that's available to all staff and we're continuing to rotate staff through that. And then the Vermont Superintendent's Association last year offered a training to school districts in missionary practices. And then finally, we're always building infrastructure. The principals, we did a book club last year about having walkthroughs as a tool to monitor instructional practicing, who would like to be an instructional leader. So again, the goal of the presentation tonight. So again, we're here with all of the principals. We're here, the team, we have our national leaders tonight. We are excited to share for three recovery and give you a little snippet. And we're all here, so if anyone has any questions, right near us.
Please let me go.
I'm the growth rates and percentages on this page. For the math, I noticed that we did have the growth rates of ways between five. I was wondering if that would be coming in the future.
I think that we need to reach the end of this year to have that coming. Wasn't kept firmly with that other than we wanted this size to be big enough. Last year, providing growth rates and having kids do testing was inconsistent. You have to have two testing scores in order to make sure you have a growth rate. And so we have enough testing scores for the grades that you see.
So if I understand you correctly, if they're not listed because the growth rate wasn't good, it wasn't a way that you felt comfortable sharing.
No, it was because I want to make sure that they have a false score, a true score, and that there's enough to be statistical saying that this is us. And we had, we, our principals and staff worked really hard at getting kids to come back into the schools last year. And so at, at those grades, it was harder. And so we didn't have as many benchmarking. We want to get back to the three benchmarking. Benchmarking was difficult last year because attendance was challenging as, as kids got back into school. So it had nothing to, it's not keeping from growth rates. It's you can't have a growth rate unless there's two things to compare the growth to.
Okay. I, I just, there is nothing for me to look at for grades three, four, five.
It will be, it's, it's coming.
That's because it fell in that, you know, year there, 2021, 21 year. So it's like, I should, I remember, yeah, best years, and you those numbers too. And there was no group, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And then the other question, I just, I didn't understand this piece, where this, where the shaded area would be or should be.
Oh, sure. Well, I can tell you typical growth is 75, and I should have put that down. So I apologize for that. 75% to 80% is typical. And aggressive growth is 80% and higher. I apologize for not having that on this. I apologize for that, Sandy, that's, I will work on that. No, feedback is good. Feedback is good. You need to have that.
Sure. When will that start?
I told you to have that ready. I have to go on the website. When does the window open? Yeah. It's Monday. Thank you, John. I didn't want to miss that. But then that's, on the website, but, thanks, John.
Can you explain the difference between growth rates and is here, growth rates and growth norms? Or the difference between those two?
So where are you looking, Senator?
Yeah, on the first page, you tell you know, it said, you see the growth norms. Then other ones said growth rate.
It's the same.
Did the same thing, okay.
Now it's.
It's two different terms.
It's two different terms in the same way. We should be more consistent, really. We'll, we'll know that when we make our next goals.
So when I, that's the background, Dan, you're saying. So if you look at here for, you know, somebody at 70, you know, this year.
Yes, sir.
You have 78% to 93K. Those are, you know, you have those up in top, those must be percent. And the other ones are rates. So are they, are those interchangeable?
They're two different, they're two different test platforms. So FastBridge gives the growth percentage. So that would be the students that need typical or aggressive growth or growth rate, growth rate percentile that they need. That's what FastBridge gives us.
Yeah.
In math, on the other hand, gives us the rates, which they say should be between 2% and 5%. And generally between 2% and 5%. Bit room for improvement.
Jeff, did you jump out to me? It's the median growth rate percent sign.
Yeah.
Figures, and I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah. It's just fine, you look at 70% and 2% at one place. Sure. It's just bizarre, I think, two numbers.
Next, of course, question B. Science, are you adding that as part of your math testing or are you using the Sback as the science criteria? On the, on this data collection page.
The science is included from the snapshot.
But you're measuring it with the Sback?
The, the state testing. The state testing is measured with the next generation science standards.
For grade five?
For grade five, seven, and another, well, for.
Sorry, I had everybody in my head. I apologize. If you want to leave anybody out, then I'll forget.
When the state releases Sback scores, we can go there and look at the scores. And they'll give you that, you know, level one, two, three, four, wherever they're doing now for percentages.
They're going to give it in the same way that I showed you here.
Okay, so it's the kind of growth rates. They're not looking at overall final score to help what the kids are doing. How many are proficient, how many are below proficient, and how many. Right, well, basic.
Unless they change things. They're going to do it this way where it's meeting, not meeting, progressing. So it's a four point, it's a, you know, it's a four point scale.
With the science, to kind of add on to what Sandy was saying, with the science, if it's only, we're only testing a quick grade, what are you comparing them to for elementary? So like, what, how do you, how do you figure out growth, I guess?
So what we do is internally, we have our curriculum-based measures. So we have those for science, we have those for social studies. We also have curriculum-based measures that we could talk about for mathematics beyond just what you see from here, that again, all of our principals have data. Their teams get together and do professional learning committees where they look at the data. So for science, it would be those curriculum-based measures that they look at. So it's not just those three different grade levels and that once a year test.
A question about the CIP. So I.
Intergovernmental plans, yes.
So, we continue. Are the goals for each of the schools, and this is a better question for our principals or for your professors, whoever can best answer, are the goals within the CIP, is their format mandated by whatever the expectations are set forth in the CIP? I'm doing that because I'm noting the similarity in each goal.
Yes.
They obviously, they, it represents your three steps. How specifically were these goals developed?
So that's a great question. So the, the state, so the state does have a team that monitors this aspect of our system. And so they did come up with a, I would call it a template. We had some, some little round. But the rule is you make your continuous improvement plan at the district level first. So we come together as an entire district, which is what we'll have to do this year. We'll have to look at our data and as a district-level team, we'll develop the district goal first. The district, at this point in time, was allowed to have five goals based on the data that we saw. So at the district level, we have a, a reading goal, the safe and healthy schools goal. We have a math goal. We have a science goal, and we have a personalization goal. Each, then the next step of the process, and they did guide our process for us, was that we have to develop the school-level plans and they have to feed off the district-level plan. So to your point, because everything, it's supposed to make sense. Like a school should be working closely off the goal of the, of the district. So there's variation because then it respects the, the culture and whatever school needs to work on. So it's every, every team then, what happened next was, you guys can jump in, because it took us a year. Then every, every school-level team follows that same process. They look at the district-level plan, they look at their own plan. And the school-level teams were allowed to only have three goals. And one had to be, Vermont required one to be at that point, reading literacy and one to be safe and healthy schools. And then you could see pretty much consistently that the third goal that every school chose was math across the board. So they did. And then, so there was a, a formula, there was also a process that was recommended to us about, about how to go through the data review. It's, so the similarity and, and the rationale behind it is that it should, everything should be interconnected so you can align your resources. So that helps, she's, yeah, she's, that helps John really tune in to our needs. She's very aware. And so we always say, only if John, she's attached to that district goal. But then it's very easy for her to filter out to be, to support the schools at the, at the differentiated level that they're at based on that math goal.
So are the learnings points being measured on their personal growth or on what is exactly the grade level? You mean proficiency, proficiency growth? In their growth, I'm just looking at a couple of these where it says, learners will be able to see their growth rate. So I'm asking, are you going to be based on their personal growth rate as a group or on, or is it meant against what the standard is?
So that would be a good question. So I think each principal, I think each school, you're, because you're reflecting, you're reading each school's goals.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? So I think that goes into the differentiated goal that each school set about how their, that's a great question for the, for the principals. I'm going to jump in for, for the principals unless they desperately want to, to say, the nice thing about you, Sandy, is you know maps. So it's nice that I can just say to you, you know. So it's nice that I can just say to you, you know that the great thing about MAPs is it will get a group of students in front of you on the screen. It will compare them to say have they met their normed rate, that's normed across the entire nation. And then it will tell me percentage-wise for that whole group, how they did. So you know that, because you've seen that before, I don't know if a principal wants to jump in, but.
Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
I think we're on the I, I was just, I think that they're very aggressive goals, and I'm a little nervous about that.
And for me, the aggressive goals, I'm looking at, sorry, I'm looking at Monument. It said ELA by twenty, twenty-three, seventy-five percent. You know, I don't know what is before, but I know this date for Sback in twenty-nineteen is only thirty-three percent will be efficient, so sixty-six percent it gives will be low. So if I'm looking at seventy-five, this date, I average is thirty-three for proficiency. And that's twice the state average, twice plus. So I mean, that's not, we know, and if you're interested in what the Sbacks were going to be for, you know, all the other schools, they're the only that this Sback is efficient.
So again, I think that if I go back to Chris, Chris's point, there is, there is places, there's commonalities, places where we come together, and then there's places for school-level leadership teams to really dive in and follow that process to develop their goals. And then the other piece I want to remind you about is that a lot of these goals, we set them before we knew what's going to happen. And so there's a good chance that a lot of these goals are going to continue on, and we know that the state's, some good news. Oh, Doug, yes.
I was just going to add that, again, remember that our goals were three years ago. And if you look at Monument's Sback results, at the time that we made these goals, it was very close. We did have some proficiency in the sixty percentile range, if my memory serves me correctly. But I think that it's also important just to remember that we are really looking for each one of our learners to make a year's worth of progress each year. That's really the heart of what we're looking for for children. And so now we're going to see a big variation of where kids fall out when we have our next assessment, just because we're responding to our recovery. I hope that's helpful.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A couple of items, over there, I, I'll use it by the title, because always the director board. Our, you may have received those in mail, but if not, take one, it's the newest updated guide for school board members for, for State One. So feel free to take one. I want to say one thing about the move, well, actually, it's probably more than one. It was a, a big event, and it's still in progress, we're not done. And I'd love to give you a tour of the facility tonight, but we're, we're saying that we are going to have an open house or, you know, a tour day to let people see. But you're, you're sitting tonight in probably the, the, the best representation of what this space will look like. The conference room is, this, this public area is far more done than, you know, what's behind it. There's still a lot of boxes in the way, and copiers not hooked up that are in the hallways, and so we, we will get you there. It's, it's been a monumental task, and I do want to acknowledge that, that some of the difficulties that we encountered here and recognize the impact it has had on staff, on families, on the great community, on school board members. First, the move took place, you know, later than we actually planned, we always had a target for July one, that didn't happen. But, you know, you're at the mercy of when the movers are available. And so it, it, we were already a little behind, which really impacted some of the other things that were taking place simultaneously. So it really was nobody's fault, it's just that, I was at the mercy of when the movers were available. But at the same time, the move, we weren't going to take our old, our old phone system with us. We went to a new phone system, which then had further impacts, such as the service provider didn't really have the service provided when we needed it. We were operating for a few days, really, by cell phones, and some of you know what? You tried to call in, parents tried to call in, and they were getting bounced back, or they couldn't get through, or they couldn't leave voic, leave voicemails. It took a while to, to work through that, and the major, you know, problem, there was, there was a path that the service provider needed, the phone, you know, what we would normally call the phone company, that wasn't going to get here until August twenty-second, so that really, you know, set us back. So the change in the phone system had to happen, and we're having difficulties, but at one point, all phone calls were going through our front office, all you would call here, and if you, you would get a, the call for Shasbury Elementary School would come through here, and our receptionist would then have to direct them to Shasbury Elementary School. You couldn't, you couldn't do the directory, or, and it was just, we were navigating difficult waters. So then, at the same time, then we changed our phone system, well, that impacted some of the public address systems in the schools. So that all had to be rectified, and it's still, we're still, our tech department is still putting out some of those, those fires as, as we, you know, got staff back into the building and realized where some holes were that we, that we didn't see. Then I mentioned also at the same time that our copier contract expired, so we went to a new vendor on copiers. And the new phone system also didn't work with our fax machines, because they were an old technology that weren't supported by the new phone system, but not to worry, because the, the new photocopiers will have that capability and, once they're all set up. So we're still scrambling with some of that, and there are, and there are some, I know, faxing seems like an antiquated office practice, but in, in some of our dealings that, you know, particularly from our medical providers and things like that, that's, that's how they come in. But they now will now go to your email, and you can print it out that way, so let's be a more secure, once that happens. And our email platform changed. We went, and, and I'm going to introduce you to somebody in a minute who could maybe explain a little bit more than, than I'm doing about how we changed from Outlook to cloud-based system, sort of, which brought us from trying to maintain all these servers that were housed at the high school to now, brought us, or the way the rest of the world is doing it, into a, a cloud-based system. But as some board members have experienced, that also created problems, and trust me, I was there with frustration too, because all of a sudden, you know, I, I live by my phone, that's where my emails come, and all of a sudden, they stopped coming to my phone, that was a few days of panic for me. But I think, you know, there's so many people to thank, and so I'm going to probably wait until I can actually get through all this project and write down everybody's name and thank, but clearly, you know, this, it, I had pushed for a new building, and I championed about really, let's remember, we've, we've gone through a lot, but why did we get here? Because the building that we were in, central office, was not adequate. And, and saying that it wasn't adequate is an understatement. It wasn't safe, and it wasn't, it wasn't healthy. It was not accessible. The lower level of that building had no accessibility or no bathrooms. And, you know, that's just fundamentally, you know, goes against everything that we believe about accessibility for all, right? That, that building didn't, didn't have that. So we are in a, a safer building, a healthier building, there was no ventilation system in the other building, there's a ventilation system here. I was in an office that I had to run my air conditioner in the winter to keep it cool enough so that Nick Galt, at the end of that heating pipeline, he'd be sitting in his office with winter coat on. So that's all behind us, so as we get through these moving pains, it, it is, it is going to be for the best. And, and renovating that building, I'm going to keep saying this, and this number's probably five years old now from, we had an engineering study. It was to completely renovate that building and make it accessible for both floors, with bathrooms, with an elevator, it was going to be three, three point seven five million dollars to renovate that building. So it, it, it's, this has been a great move, but, you know, every move has its difficulty. I thank everybody for their patience. So, yeah, I may, I may have had the vision that this, you know, we needed to move, we needed to get out of that building, but it wouldn't have happened without, you know, some people who really pursued it, kept meeting with fellows, and that, you know, Renee Gordon, I have to, you know, publicly thank her for that. So it's easy for me to say, go get a new building, it's quite another thing to actually go out and get it. And then, you know, the core people that I work with, you know, Laura, Melissa, Nick Galt, Renee, now Holly, who, you know, started, what, August, what?
About the first Monday in August.
First, yeah, and we'll jump right into, you know, trying to get everything set up here. And the people that work in this building, and who left spaces that they were comfortable with, you know, I want to thank them for their patience and understanding. And you'll see, like, you know, we got windows that have boxes piled up in them because of the morning sun, they can't see the computer screen. You know, the window coveries are coming. It, it, it all will be worth it, worth it in, you know, in the end, I just, and the tech department, and I'm, again, I'm going to introduce somebody in a minute who could maybe thank more, but for me, the people that I see, you know, Chip Watson, Elaine Hewitt, Marcia Noyes, and Anne Hillard, those are the people that I tend to work with in my, I, I can't imagine what they have gone through, the amount of phone calls, and the patience that they have shown as people calling, like, I can't get on my email, my, my computer's not hooked up. And they've, they've done it with little complaint. So at this time, if you might remember, a guy, Frank Barnes, retired, he was our Director of Technology Education. And we made the decision at that time to keep our employees, but to hire a company to be the manager of our technology systems. So that company that we hired a year ago now, Schuser Technology, their representative is here this evening. He's been with us, Mark Given, he's in the back there. Mark, I can't thank you enough for, you know, what you and your staff have done. I know, I'm sure you, I, I am truly amazed at how you stay calm, you know, when people are pretty upset with you. So it's not, it's not a bad trait, so if you want to say hello to the board, I don't think you've ever, if they've ever met you, but he has, he has answered my call that you need to get here and correct these issues.
Hello, my name is Mark Given. Actually, thirty-year retired from IT in a corporate environment down in the New York City area, and got involved with Schuser IT. And this is one of the accounts that I was brought into about a year ago. As Jim was saying, an enormous amount of change has happened in a very short amount of time. Did I leave anything out? Copiers, fax machines, phone, email platform?
Yeah, that pretty much covers everything that's still going on. We're, we're in very good shape. We, we've just, even in the last two weeks, although most of it's been fire drills, we've been able to take care of a lot of the issues that were left over from the, from the activities, mainly around the phone system project. Unfortunately, you know, as the story goes, Murphy had a lot to do with everything that we were taking on, and And you're, we're also dealing with two different vendors there, because we had
Yeah.
I know, but I call it the phone company, but it's not the phone company. And then the provider of our phones is different from
Yeah.
If I'm explaining that correctly.
The company that actually came in was a subcontractor first line, was Gage out of Texas. And they were the ones that provided the hardware, and they flew some technicians up to do the install. They, they did a, a good job, but, you know, they were on a very short timeline. I don't think they, they expected to run into some of the things that they did. We have some very old buildings in the district. Normally, you would expect the network infrastructure to be in better shape, and in some of these buildings, it, it's old wiring, right, you know, right down to the, the ports that we plug into with support to phones that we were installing. So again, you know, it was little pockets here and there, but it, it was painful for the people that were impacted. And hopefully, we got them resolved as quickly as they needed us to.
And so, Mike, you know, I'm going to ask you this in front of all the board, and with cable TV recording, the, all problems are going to be rectified and corrected, right?
Absolutely, yeah, we're not going to stop until we've got everything wrapped up. I will say, in the last couple of days, I, I've been watching every single ticket come through the system. And in the last couple of days, it looks a lot more BAU than it has in a few weeks. So I think
What was that acronym you used?
Uh, which, which
BAU.
BAU, Business As Us, yeah.
We, we try to use the full phrase the first time through.
Yeah, sorry.
Used it.
All right. Hence, that's one question. So is the Outlook emails completely done now, that we can't use of that anymore?
So a little background on, on our email system. The, the district was using Exchange, which is becoming end-of-life very quickly. So we had to come up with an alternative solution, if I went to Gmail. That was not an easy migration, there is not an easy migration from Exchange to Gmail, so we actually had to migrate from Exchange to Microsoft, and then to Gmail. Outlook can still be used, Outlook is just your client, so you can point your client back to a number of different backend mail systems, and Gmail's one of them. So if you prefer to use Outlook, you can do it. For most of the folks, we would prefer to just stay on Gmail, because it's just that.
And then this would be a probably house clean for Jim, for the Vermont School Board Association. I think the district imported all of our emails in there, and, because, you know, they send us those emails on a monthly, weekly basis, going on. Since they're probably coming to, you know, because a lot of information there that we look at.
So have you not been getting your Vermont School Board?
I haven't gotten anything, so that will come, so, yeah, that's why I asked. So I want to miss, you know, I think, probably there are meetings coming up soon. I'm guessing twenty, twenty. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I get it on my own email either way.
Yeah.
Send it to them.
See, like, they, because ours, we are a public entity and a public email system, and all our emails are archived, so that's why we're going to a public, you know, you're only going to your SVU email. But the Vermont School Board Association can be different, they could send it directly to your, to your
Yeah, that's why I did a Gmail, if you got early on, I used the Outlook email for my school stuff.
So when I did go on and I did my Gmail, and it's all set up and fine, but did none of the stuff that was in there before? Like, it doesn't migrate over, right? So all the
That's why it's important that Mark's here to hear.
Yeah, so all the emails we had in Outlook are kind of just hanging out there, or are they going to migrate over to the Gmail?
Well, it depends on, when you say where they were in Outlook. If those were in Exchange, those should have migrated, and we can go back and take a look at that. If that Outlook was pointing to a personal email, then those would not migrate, we don't have control.
Yeah, no, it was the SBSU in the Exchange.
In the Exchange, yes.
But it doesn't look like we're now I'm in the Gmail, any of those emails that I, like, the old ones that we get from Amy and stuff like that, they're not in my inbox within Gmail, like they're in, in the Exchange.
Yeah, we can migrate all of them.
And I'll take it a step further, that I got a message that said that a custom mail rule created by an admin at SBSU blocked my message.
So there are, and you should, I can get that from you before you do.
Sure, sure.
There are generic mail rules that are set up in the system to filter certain
My subject was board meeting.
So I don't, I don't, I'd have to take a look at that, yeah.
I'm dead, but trouble making Thank you all for your patience.
So, so who would be the go-to person as board members, Jim, if we have issues? Who should we be reaching out to directly for IT?
You, if you have issues, reach out and meet directly, or, and we could set up some time. We did set up a, a meeting the other night to help people with the transition for the, all the board members for transition to email. If you're still running into problems, we can
Have a session.
Yeah, I know, David Frederickson and his wife the other day, she came and
And if you can talk, if you have availability during the day too, you can make an appointment, come in.
So he's here at the daytime?
Yeah, with that, just make sure that he's going to be here, but with that But we've had other board members come in to get that work down on. And the other, just anything else from Mike before I, no, good. So, yeah, I thought the board may be curious, so I asked for a breakdown from Human Resources about where there still are current vacancies in the South West One, you know, in the school district. Benning Elementary School is in process with a potential candidate for school nurse because you had a resignation after the start of the school year. Monument Elementary School is still looking for behavior intervention specialists. Pownell Elementary School is still in need of a custodian. And Shasberry Elementary School also is in need of a custodian. So you know anybody. But considering there were over a hundred staff members from custodians to administrators onboard during, for the start of the school year. So that, but there are a lot of employees here. So considering that, I, I see more openings impacting teaching positions at the high school and middle school level right now than what we're seeing in our elementary. So all in all, good, good shape for the start of the school year. But they, I know that both those elementary schools are struggling without full staff or custodians. That's, any questions? I'm here.
Any questions in the superintendent? Great. So the next agenda item policies, there was a policy maybe last night, I don't know, for. In terms of agenda item seven, the chair's report, just to, to tear around the thanks to all of our building administrators and staff for the successful opening of an up school year. You know, by and large, just positive reports across the board. It's always great to hear. It's, it's, it's thanks to the summer's worth of preparation by everyone. It's not just show up and, show up at the end of August, they're talking to us. It's the dedication that we see year after year after year coming through all year long from all of our staff. So thanks very much for that. And just to note, there was discussion at our last board meeting regarding pulling together an ad hoc committee to take a look at issues related to behavior and discipline in the schools. That took a different turn during the summer months. So it's, it's an ongoing process. Scott has been a part of it as vice chair. I've also been part of it. I guess gathering some baseline information from our SBSU administrators first before we could really engage on that work. Just realizing how much there was to learn about those processes before we do a sort of go forward. So a, a, a project that is taking longer, it's certainly not forgotten, that was not put in the summer. So that brings us to agenda item eight, our principal report.
They already, it was all padded in the superintendent.
Which was great. I thought, I thought Principal Ward would be offering something else if she was here.
But we, well, we were going to have her sing and dance, but.
Great.
I want to say employee.
Say it again, please.
On the donation for Molly Stark, I don't know, do we actually accept the donation as part of our?
Did you take them off?
We didn't take, and, and the treasurer's report.
Did we not take a vote to?
I thought we did C and D, but we kind of skipped over A and B.
Yeah, but I think we, we did. Yeah, and that's because Jeff is going to write the thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. And technically, you don't have to vote to accept the treasurer's report. It is their report. You can vote to acknowledge it, but you, you can't change it.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks. So that brings us to our FYI, which is the budget status report and student enrollment numbers. The student enrollment numbers I did not see were posted. Maybe I overlooked them. I looked again tonight right before we started and I didn't see those. But hopefully those will be posted too. And so I would pursue to agenda item ten, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to, one, Vermont Statute of Sanitation, three thirteen, section two, which governs the, which allows for a private discussion of negotiating or superior real estate purchase or lease or option. And as there's no action anticipated from that, anyone who's watching can safely turn off. But don't worry, they won't mess anything back.
Ask the chair if the board would vote to allow the Director of Civilism and Operations, the Superintendent and the Director of Finance to attend the executive session.
Great, so I'm entertaining that motion to enter into executive session, allowing the staff that superintendent call key discussion. So I'll take a chair. Any discussions about executive session? Hearing none, all of us in favor of entering the executive session, please take that by my side and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.